Recording. And you're on.
Good evening. We've already started the meeting in an open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. We are live streaming and broadcasting on MCTV. A recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the GMRSD website. Members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join the meeting through the following links that may be found on our website under School Committee, Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings. And what you need to do is find tonight's school committee meeting specifically. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast and also join us through our Zoom links. The extension of the Emergency Open Meeting Law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. We would like to welcome visitors and especially welcome our Zoom audience. Please remember if you're in the audience.
She's telling everyone to just keep their cameras off and their microphones muted. A lot more words. We lost you, Jane.
You sound like you've heard that before.
I just.
A couple of times.
Like, so where did you stop hearing me?
It's okay. I told everyone the rules. Cameras off, microphones off. We're good.
Like on, you know, and if anybody.
Laid down the law.
Yeah, right. Good. This would be public participation, but nobody's requested it. So it's still available at any meeting. All right, moving on to important events, Brian.
So first Wednesday, November 24th was going to be an early release day, but I made the decision to close school. I'll be sending out an accounting that I received from Melissa Bednarski of the pool testing, as well as the number of positive cases that we had today. But we consulted with the Board of Health and contacted the Commissioner directly, believing it wasn't worth having another half day of school the day before Thanksgiving and taking the risk of potentially transmitting the virus more extensively before the holidays, but instead taking advantage of the long weekend to close the schools, do a thorough cleaning. And having informed everybody, I did want to say thank you to Melissa Bednarski and each of the district nurses and obviously sending out their names. They did a phenomenal job today under really intense pressure to get in touch with everybody. But in particular, Melissa Bednarski and arranged for us to do pool testing, although it typically happens on different days of the week at every school. She arranged for every school to do their pool testing yesterday, which was really important because it turns out there were a bunch of positive cases in those pools. And now those families know and can hopefully protect their families as we head into the long holiday weekend. Thursday and Friday, no school for celebration of Thanksgiving. The Pfizer COVID Vaccine Clinic is going to be held on Monday, November 29th at Sheffield Elementary School. That's the one with the Vax Bus from 1:30 to 5:30 PM. Friends of Sheffield meets on Tuesday, November 30th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee will meet next on Wednesday, December 1st at 4 o'clock. And Wednesday, December 8th is an early release day.
Jane, you're on mute.
Jane.
Oh, she's not. She wasn't actually frozen. She muted herself.
I just wanted to take a break from my own voice. I have Sina joining us. Thank you, Sina.
All right. Hi. Nice to see everyone. So here are some of the things that I recorded from the student council meeting this week. So there is going to be a clothing drive starting on the 29th, which is pretty exciting. I think everyone's looking forward to that. Um, we're going to be collecting the clothes in each advisory. I think it's going to be in sort of like a competition style. And I think there's going to be like a prize for which advisory collects the most clothes. Um, we're still working on like deciding on a donation center, but it's looking like it's going to be Salvation Army, but that's not completely set in stone yet. Um, Student Council is also talking about doing some bonding like exercises within the student council. They were talking about maybe breakfast or like a movie night or something like that. Tomorrow was going to be pajama day, but it looks like we're not going to school, which is good for the safety of our students and staff, but that was going to happen. Um, the Walkathon that was hosted on Veterans Day went really, really well. I don't know if I talked about this last time, but we raised over $2,000. And that was the sophomore class, by the way, and donations are still coming in. But I don't know how that's going to be affected by the long weekend. We'll see. Yeah, so that was a major success and that's going to be donated to community service. I can't remember the CSO is what it said letters, but I can't remember exactly what it stands for. And then their senior class was going to run a bake sale. They said Sunday. They didn't specify which Sunday. And I don't know how that's going to be affected by the sudden like absurdity COVID cases, but that was going to be at Stop and Shop and it was not completely worked out yet, but I just heard a little bit about that. Also, yes, the Fall Conference for Student Council is set to be December 4th. And they changed the location and so I'm not exactly sure where it is yet, but I can find that out. Yeah, that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you updating us on things. So people can still send donations to for the Walkathon to the school if they were not able to get there to make them in person?
Um, they were. This was kind of like the closing week and I think everyone is supposed to get there then for tomorrow. But since there's no school tomorrow, I think we're pretty much like gonna stop accepting donations now.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Yep. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, Brian, super. I'm sorry, Mike.
Thank you. Before Sina leaves. Hi. Thank you. Enjoyed Narnia very much. I'm curious to know who did the fight choreography?
That was one of our students, actually Kylie Ponquist. If I'm saying her name right, but she did a very wonderful job. She does a lot of our choreography for different productions. I know she worked with us for Matilda as well. And yeah, it was really great to have a student do it rather than bring in another adult. And so I love when that happens in their productions. But yeah, that was super exciting. The production was super well. I was part of it and it was like a really great atmosphere and it really boosted morale, I think, amongst students. We got a ton of people to come in too. Like I know a lot of my classmates joined us and that was super exciting. Especially like a lot of the boys joined and they were wanting to be super loud and they were all competing to be the loudest. And so it made for really great energy in the audience, which like the podcast, so.
Like, I actually offered to do the fight choreography. They wouldn't let me.
You just know, that's all. So I know we recognized you through the horns, no problem there, enjoyed your performance. But I just want people to know that that choreography was very complex and also well performed. The fellow played Peter was quite masterful at the fight choreography, as was the queen, which is no easy task in the costume she was wearing. And it was a crowd scene. It wasn't just the two of them. They were in and out of other combatants, as it were, throughout. That was really quite impressive. So thanks for all of that.
Yeah, it was definitely our cast putting a ton of work into that one scene. It was like, it was many hours dedicated to just like one moment. So it was really cool to see it all coming together.
Very successful.
Thanks, Sina.
Yeah.
Thank you very much and thanks for mentioning that, Mike. We appreciate it. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
So as Mike just brought it up and Sina reminded herself that last weekend, we were pleased to see the first ever fall theater production at Turner's Falls High School. Thirty students, including many students new to theater productions, participated in the three shows of The Chronicles of Narnia, The Lion, the Witch and the Wardrobe. I wanted to say congratulations to all of the student performers and stage crew and to the theater advisors Kimberly Rose and Alyssa Camo on very successful performances. In addition to the student actors and stage support, we also wanted to thank the dozens of students from Mr. Chapel and Mr. Lamore's classes who worked so hard to build the various sets and intricate costumes for the play. As a result of their efforts in connecting the kids from their classes, really an enormous number of students ended up making contributions to this production and we're very appreciative. What we're most excited about is to see so many students who have been uninvolved before become involved with theater arts. And we're hopeful that we'll have. We have in fact seen similar registrations for winter athletics. So I want to give Mr. Barnes and the faculty a ton of credit for the work that they're doing and encouraging students to come out and be involved in areas of the school community and extracurricular activities that they might not otherwise be involved in. And as you see from Sina, students are really welcoming their peers and encouraging them to join them. And that's obviously the kind of culture that we want to have at the school. I also wanted to acknowledge the Helping Hands and Athletic Leadership Council. You may remember the school committee approved this as a student activities group last year. Four high school students working with Helping Hands in the Athletic Leadership Council prepared and distributed 20 Thanksgiving dinners to families in the community. Thank you to the high school students Nicholas Martin, Paige Shulda, Emily Young and Owen Levalle for their dedication and their service in putting the meals together. I did also want to add from Mr. Graves that the council is planning to distribute additional food items. They're considering doing upwards of 30 plus food baskets heading into the vacation and that they're holding fundraisers at the home basketball games on December 13th and December 17th. People attending those games can make a food donation or a monetary contribution to this drive in place of admissions to the game. And all proceeds from those games will go toward the fund to help feed the community. And also a final congratulations to the girls volleyball team and head coach Kelly Latanian on what I can only say was a truly amazing season. The team finished with an incredible record of 19 wins and three losses, including making it to the final eight in Division Five out of 43 teams. So congratulations to the girls volleyball team. In weekly COVID numbers, this was as of last Thursday. Obviously we'll have some additional numbers in Montague, perhaps in Gill and perhaps in Irving now. But as you know, numbers across the state have been on the rise and in many states across the country as people begin to move inside. And even in the face of vaccinations, we certainly have a number of breakthrough infections. It seems that in our area, the town of Orange continues to be the place that is most troublesome with 54 cases. They had 30 and hadn't really gotten below 30 since the peak of the pandemic. But what's shocking about their numbers is that they have a 7.29% positivity over the last 14 days. And so there is a significant presence of the virus in Franklin County. And the CDC ranks now ranks Franklin County as high likelihood of transmission or high risk of transmission as of Monday, November 22nd. I did also want to share that I made a decision in conjunction with the Megan Ben Dixon and Jessica Kula Curtis, who are the teachers who were planning to take the students to Europe next year. Due to the fact that the deadlines to commit to travel in March were coming up in November, there were some significant travel and safety concerns that emerged. I made the decision to postpone based on postpone the trip to the 2022 and 2023 school year. And the primary factors that contributed to that involve really exceedingly high case counts right now across Europe and to make some sort of a financial commitment while the place that they're going to is in the throes of a pretty significant outbreak seemed irresponsible to me. And in addition to that, I am also concerned about the instability of the airline industry. And for those two reasons, what I wanted to avoid having happen this year was to have students go overseas and be, say, in Rome and being prepared to return home only to told, only to be told, one, that their flight was canceled and they're going to stay there for another week, or two, that they have to quarantine and we don't know when we can get them back because that would incur not only safety concerns, but unplanned costs that the trip can't account for and insurance likely would not cover. So I just wanted to let the committee know that that's not going to be coming to the committee for approval until perhaps later in the school year, but to be approved for the following year. In food service, we are thankfully in the process of hiring our final open food service position. This should allow each of the cafeterias to increase the amount of fresh cooked food, fresh cooked meals for students. As far as supply issues, our most significant product provider is returning orders in about six days later than usual. This longer than normal period of lead time requires that Mr. McGardle and his building-based staff plan ahead and have contingencies in place because in addition to the delay, we are not always aware that some items may be missing from particular orders until that order arrives and is accounted for. So they, you know, we're doing okay. The company has let us know about the lead time and Mr. McGardle and his cafeteria supervisors are planning around that. And so we'll continue to make every effort to stick to the menus as we have planned. And that's it for my report.
Mike?
Thank you. Going back to the theater news. So this was the first fall production, which is exciting and it's different. Folks are wondering, there's, it's not a musical, so it's a very different kind of production, much easier and cheaper to do. Are they, I wonder, are they funding it all themselves? Are there scheduled B positions available to support this sort of activity?
Yeah, the two advisories are on, are in the contract. And so, you know, they, they receive a stipend for that. And then the funding comes up for, well, in this case, it would be script as opposed to musical score. But the funding for scripts and musical scores comes out of the gate receipts from attendance. And so it should be self-funding. And at least in the last two years, we've had enough money in that student activities account to cover various costs, including, I'm not sure whether or not the students, all of the students got T-shirts and I'm not sure how that was organized, whether the students paid for those out of pocket or whether or not those came out of the student activities account. Heather?
And this can be brought up at a future point. I've only been here six years, so I don't know if it's something you've spoken about before. I did have a question about kids having to pay to get in. It just seems like the high school kids having to fund their own activities is a little odd. I mean, we have a community where we have free lunch and breakfast. And I don't, I mean, I know that it's self-funding and so it's a touchy subject, but I don't know if there's some discussion we could open up about how we can support it further, but then not necessarily have high school kids or kids for any event pay for their own school events. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have a conversation with the advisors to get a sense of, you know, what could be done in that regard for the purpose, you know, obviously, I'm sure that you're thinking is that if we're increasing student attendance by virtue of the fact that they don't have to pay, that they're more likely to, one, they're supporting their peers and two, they're perhaps more likely to get involved themselves. And I know other schools have done things where they've created incentives in some cases for students to complete particular tasks or, you know, do some, get identified as doing something kind or achieve the honor roll and you know, they would then get free admission. So I did, there was one more piece that I missed from my report that I wanted to add as well that Adam Graves shared with me that 92% of the students who participated in fall athletics made the quarter one honor roll. And I thought that was worthy of noting.
Yes, yes. I think that's wonderful. Thank you. Student athletes. I think it's a great combination as well as student singers and actors. And I think this is all gives us something to think about how important these kinds of activities are. I mean, both of these being on the list of successful, the volleyball team, the play. I think it's a well-rounded experience for students in a school would include those kinds of things. And I think, I think it's an important thing to bring up as we're looking at our next budget. I think looking at, you know, do, do we have enough to fund those kinds of things? Are there ways to make it work better? I think that's a great point, Heather. Do we not need to charge students or, you know, is there something else we could do for sure?
Yeah, if we could put it on an agenda at some point, yeah, incentives reduced, something, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
We need league play. That's what we need, competition.
Like Battle of the Performers or something, you know, competing plays, you know, we could. But thank you. I, you know, I think all these things are good to bring up as they come and then revisit them later. Thank you. Joanne, Business and Operations Report.
Okay, so I just wanted to add a little piece about play also. One way I've seen it offered to the students for free would be to have small pieces of the play performed during the school day, right, as an assembly, right? And so then the kids are seeing a piece of it. They're not missing out on it completely and that's for free. And maybe they want to pay to go see the whole thing. So that is one way. And I don't, maybe they did that at the school, but I'm not really sure. So.
They have core musicals, but Sina said they didn't for this because it's just kind of harder to get the whole context in just a few minutes.
Oh, but I'm sure my scene alone would be enough to, you know, make them interested. But I think that is something to consider too, because, you know, maybe there are some students that wouldn't be able to come in the evening or on the weekend when it's offered. And that's another way to just make them familiar with it. I think again, not a bad suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a few things in your budget packet or in your packet about the budget. So one of the things is just the starting discussion about our fiscal '23 budget. So I'm showing you a picture of what our historical revolving accounts look like. So that is one of the handouts that you have. So we've tried for the years that I've been here to spend about as much from the school choice revolving account that we bring in. So if you look at the top of that chart, you'll see how we've spent money and what our beginning balance was. And you see that, you know, we spend right around the same amount until fiscal '21. So we had a surplus in fiscal '21. So we were able to underspend that school choice revolving account by quite a bit, which frees up money for these future years. We can spend a little bit more each of these next couple of years to make up for lost revenue from Chapter 70. You can also see that our revenue in fiscal '18, $900,000 versus our anticipated revenue in fiscal '22, $550,000. So our revenue is coming down, which means we have less kids choice again, which means we have less overall money to spend from that account of new revenue from year to year. So trying to keep about a year's worth of revenue in there to roll over as our beginning balance is a good idea. So we're, we have that surplus. And so if we're going to bring in about $550,000, then we could spend $750,000 for the next few years until we get that balance back down to about $550,000, $700,000. So that way, going forward, if we're bringing in $550,000, then we're dropping down how much we spend back to around $550,000, right? The circuit breaker revolving, we're only allowed to roll over the amount of money we collect in revenue in that given year. So you can see there as well, our revenue has come down. So the good news is that we have less high needs students that we've been sending to out of district placements. And so we have less expenses, but then we have this, this lower revenue amount in circuit breaker. However, this year I think we may qualify for what's called, what's it called, Diane? I can never remember.
Sorry, finding my mute button, different platform, extraordinary relief.
Extraordinary relief.
And I'm sorry, I had to check out. I had a phone call come in, so. Hopefully no one was calling on me while I was not available. Sorry about that.
Think you were safe. So this year it looks like we may qualify for extraordinary relief because our cost of out of district placement students, the very high cost students is up higher than we had anticipated. And so while our revenue projection right now is lower than normal, I think that could go up, but we won't know for another few months if it goes up. And the good news with extraordinary relief, my favorite, is that we get to double dip. Right? It's the only time double dipping is allowed. So normally whatever we spend for expenses in fiscal, in one fiscal year, our reimbursement for those high cost students comes the following year. But when you qualify for extraordinary relief, you get money in the current year for the current year cost, high cost. And then you get money for those high costs the following year as well. So you're getting it twice because what it's doing is it's helping you cover the extraordinary cost increases that you had. Diane? You're muted.
Yeah, got it. And I just, I think for our listening audience, like, yes, the district does get reimbursed for some of the cost of expensive out of district placements, but it's really the excess cost that is four times the foundation student reimbursement, the student foundation budget. So it essentially means that the district could qualify for anywhere between, and this is where my percentages might be off and Joanne's going to fact check me. But, you know, oftentimes the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education determines those percentages, but it's, it's anywhere between, you know, 70 to 75% of the excess cost after the district spends typically over $45,000. So if a placement cost $100,000, the district is responsible for that first $45,000. And then the following year can apply for reimbursement for up to, you know, between 75% of that excess cost. That, so it's just, it's, you know, it, sometimes people think, oh, well, the district gets reimbursed on circuit breaker for these costs. That's true, but it also, we don't get fully reimbursed for those expenses.
Right. So for $100,000 students or $100,000 cost, we might get reimbursed about $30,000, right? 75% of anything over that, $50,000, $45,000. So, but it's money, still money coming back, you know? And so when you have the very high cost students, maybe you have a $200,000 student placement, now you're getting, you know, maybe $100,000 for that student. Right? You're getting about half because you have to pay the $50,000 first.
And, and just one other point of clarification is that sometimes what happens for students who are in these programs is that they are in the, they may be in the care and custody of the Department of Children and Families and they may be placed in a therapeutic school or program or a specialized program outside of our catchment area. So that's the other thing is that they may be in the custody of DCF and placed. And so the school district is a cost sharing partner on that placement and not, it may be that we weren't actively seeking to place a student, but there are complex needs outside of the school environment that can affect the student's placement that, so the district just gets to be a participating support in that child's education in, in a partnering relationship with the Department of Social Services.
Okay, so moving on to E and D. So E and D is access and deficiency in a town that would be like their free cash, right? So when we finish our year, if we have a surplus, it moves into E and D. We're not going to have a deficit. So this past year we had a surplus and so that flowed into E and D. And so our E and D was certified at just over $900,000. The year before it was certified around $615,000. So because that number is higher and we don't want it to get a lot higher than the $900,000 because we risk it going above our cap and we don't want it above our cap. And so we could spend a little bit more from E and D on the fiscal '23 budget as well. So these are just pots of money that we could use to fund the budget. So that, you know, we're not cutting programs when we're building this budget. Hopefully we'll be able to, you know, keep the programs that we have. I don't know what we'll be able to add, but, you know, once the whole budget is put together, we can. you know, once the whole budget is put together, we can get a better look at that. So another piece of the revenue comes from the assessments that the towns pay. So in in past years, you can see the historical assessments listed there. The town of Montague puts together an affordable assessment for us. And they, they give us a number that they can afford to pay. And we've worked really hard to stick with their affordable assessment. And for a number of years, it was in the four to 5% range. But starting last year, they said, you know, they weren't going to be able to afford the four to 5% range anymore. And, you know, it might be closer to two, two and a half. And so as you can see, when you look at that chart at the bottom of that page, last year's percentage increase was 2.17%. Now, when we're trying to hit an affordable assessment number for the town of Montague, the town of Gill might go up, might go down. It, it fluctuates greatly based on enrollment, based on the number of students that attend the tech school, um, minimum contribution, which is set by the state. So it's the wealth of each town individually. And so you can see how, how much the town of Gill's assessment fluctuates. Where a couple of years it was up near 9%, but then a couple of years it was less than 1%. And even last year it was a negative, it was a decrease of 4%. So there, the Gill overall assessment for those past several years, the average is closer to 2 and a half percent, where Montague's average is over 4%. So, you know, while we're, we work hard to stick with Montague's affordable assessment, it may, it may hit Gill differently from year to year, but overall it's, it's lower than what Montague's been paying. Um, the chapter 70, I've also looked at chapter 70, what I think for that. And, you know, I'm estimating about a $40 per pupil. Normally we've gotten 30, we've gotten 25, we've gotten 50. So I'm going to, you know, shoot for the middle. So $40 per pupil, it's our foundation enrollment. We have about 1,000 students, so $40,000 there. A few years ago, when the foundation budget, the way that was working and our enrollment was staying flat, we started getting money from, you know, the way the foundation budget had been reworked. And so that number was closer to, you know, five, six, $700,000, which was great. And then the pandemic hit and our enrollment declined. And now we're just not coming out of that hole harmless again. So we're back to the $40 per pupil or $30, whatever that lands on. So our ESER money is great because we're able to backfill our lost revenue with that. So we're, we're getting ESER money and, you know, while, while that's seen as this, you know, golden pot of money that everyone wants a piece of, it really is being used to make up for lost revenue from chapter 70. And, and really not much else. So so you can look at that revenue source page that shows a couple of years comparing. And the chapter 70 is up very tiny bit. I brought excess and deficiency up by $100,000. Our Irving tuition goes down $100,000. We've had a decline there. They had a small seventh grade this year. They had a pretty large senior year, uh, senior class. So, and they have another large senior class. So, you know, the, that enrollment from Irving is going down. Our charter school enrollment's going up. And so when our charter school enrollment goes up, our charter expense goes up, but our charter reimbursement also goes up, offset by the increase. And our assessment based on, on Montague's affordable assessment, I'm estimating about $400,000 increase between the two towns. Our capital assessments, our high school project, when building was built from 2003 to 2006, we're still paying on that debt. And I think we have about four years left. So in fiscal 26, we'll make our last payment on that. The capital debt for Sheffield was for our window project that we put in the auditorium in the gym and our final payments in fiscal 22. So that was not a debt exclusion. I believe that's what is, wasn't debt exclusion money. And so I believe that money then goes back to operating assessment, right? So we get a little cushion there, little extra in our affordable assessment because we're not having to pay that debt next year. I'm verifying that, that's true, but that's how I wrote this for our purposes here. You see the increase in the circuit breaker, increase in School Choice revolving at the bottom of that page. And then you can see the increase in the ESER grant, but I don't want that to look like it's a real increase because when we built this budget a year ago, we didn't know about all the different ESER funds we were going to get. We knew about ESER 1. I don't think we knew about ESER 2, and we certainly didn't know about ESER 3. And so we built 200,000 approximately into this budget for ESER funds. But we're spending more than that. We're spending more like 500,000 this year with ESER funds. So when I'm saying we could probably spend 800 next year in ESER funds because we'll be digging into ESER 3, it's not really a $600,000 increase. It's more like a 200 or 300,000 dollar increase. Okay, in these funds, you know, they sunset right around, I think fiscal 25 is when they sunset. So we have a couple more years with these funds. So we don't want to use them all upfront and then not have anything for the out years. We want to make sure we have it available. There'll be more work when we're getting ready to spend ESER 3. You know, we, we will need some input on how we're going to spend that. So more to come there. So that's what I have on the budget for fiscal 23. And then I have capital planning also.
Before you start on that, does anyone have any questions for Joanne so far on the information she's given us? Thank you. It's very helpful.
Okay, so I am going to share my screen for the capital. Just get here. Okay, can you see that PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanted to show the money, show you the projects that are in the works right now. And I'm not sure how to hide my the top bars sort of in the way for me to see. So this first page, you can, whoops. You can see the capital projects for the town of Gill. So this is for the Gill Elementary School. So we have money funded for the new security doors. So just as we had new security doors put in at Hillcrest, the double door entry way, we have a plan for Gill School to do that as well. So we've gathered quotes, but, you know, we weren't able to do this last year when we were doing the floors. So we're going to try to get things ordered because there's a long lead time. And then hopefully get this work done next summer. The second item is a building condition assessment. So, oops, my goodness, I keep doing that. So just as we did the building condition assessments for the town of Montague buildings, Hillcrest and Sheffield, we are getting ready to get that completed for the town of Gill. So we have, the contractor is coming out to take a look at the building and they should be getting that off to us soon. We did receive our preliminary report for the high school building condition assessment. So we're just reviewing that before they make that one final, and I'll hopefully be able to bring that to you at the next meeting. Um, MSBA, the town of Gill has set aside money for an MSBA feasibility study. MSBA denied our project and so that money will move out. It'll be there when we do finally get approved for an MSBA project. And then the Gill floors. So we started the Gill floors by doing all of the, taking care of all of the asbestos flooring. We remediated that, put new floors down. And so this summer we'll get working on phase two of the projects with, which would be to remove all the non-asbestos flooring throughout the remainder of the building and install the seamless floor to match what we installed last summer. So we'll be going out to bid for that in the next couple of months. Does, does anyone want to talk about the projects as we go, or do we want to wait until the end?
If you have a question as we go along.
Okay, we lost you, Jane.
We lost you. So I think what Jane was going to say is if you have a question as we go, maybe just pipe up and ask.
Okay, so I'll just pause. If anyone has a question, please let me know. We can't see you anymore. All right, I'm going to move to the next one. Um, so this would be our only capital request from the town of Gill is a new heating computer for the heating system. So the computer is from when we put the heating system in a number of years ago. It might have been 15 years ago now that they put a new heating system in. And so it, it is not communicating shutdowns or failures. And so a new notification system would help us be able to detect failures of the boiler and so it's about $10,000. The vendor said that we would, you know, having annual upgrades of this software on it annually would be about $4,000. So we are still looking into the details of this, but this would be our request. We're looking at other options, but this would be our request of the town of Gill this year. All right, the next one is the Hillcrest project. So this is funding that's already been allocated by the town. Um, we have an intercom system. And so we're getting concept solutions from vendors to figure out exactly what the best possible solution would be for our intercoms over there. Um, and hopefully we can get that bid out so we can get that work done this summer as well. We have roof repairs, so we had about $10,000 set aside initially. And we have about $1,200. And, you know, we've had some leaks here and there. And we are chasing those down. And each time we have heavy rains, there were some new leaks in one of the rooms after heavy rain. So, you know, we're still in the process of that, but we're running out of funds in that capital project. And the last item is the facade. We have 55,000 set aside. Um, we're still putting together specs so we can hopefully go out to bid for that over the winter as well. My, my goal is to get these projects that have been allocated completed before we ask for much more because what we've been doing is the projects have been piling on and they've not been getting completed. You know, we come up with great ideas, but we're not getting everything done. So we need to catch up on some of these projects so that, you know, we, we don't have so many outstanding. Sheffield, we have funding set aside, and this is Sheffield and the admin building as a whole. So the intercom system at Sheffield also needs to be replaced. So we have funding for that set aside. The central office canopy, we had a vendor that was going to come and do the work, but it, they didn't end up following through and completing the project. And so at this point, building costs are higher, building materials are higher than they had been. So, you know, we really need to figure out how we can do this project for the $10,000 at this point. And the central office facade is another area of work. You know, I don't know if we'll be able to get to all of these projects to get them done this summer, but hopefully we can get to a lot of them. So the central office facade also needs to be, the specs need to be put together so that way we can go out to bid on that one as well. The fire alarm system, we did go out to bid and the project was received, the bids were received and we had one that was under budget. So it was $88,000 was the bid. And so we will be moving forward. We've, we've checked the references and we're going to be moving forward with that. And I'm hoping that we can get a contract signed, they can come in, make sure they're ordering the right equipment and then get this scheduled to be completed during the summer. I don't know that we'll be able to get it done during a school break, but you know, during the summer, we'll get that completed. The high school, we had a couple of building, a couple of projects that funds were allocated for. One of them was the tennis courts resurfacing. So we walked through to take a look at how they did with the project and there were some bubbles coming up where the cracks used to be. So the vendor explained that sometimes that's a problem when this is done at this time of year and the moisture in the ground, you know, creates these bubbles, but they expect that they're going to settle themselves in and just correct themselves. Most of the time they do. So they're going to have to come back in the spring, take a look at that. And if those bubbles are still there, you know, there's work that's going to need to be done. So we're holding on to the funds for that. We're not going to pay them in full until the tennis courts are in good shape. And then the building condition assessment report, as I said, we, we received our draft report. And so we'll be reviewing that and getting the final report soon. So the Montague Building Condition Assessment, so the first five years of the Montague buildings, this is for Hillcrest and the Sheffield School Complex. This is a look at what our first five years of that building condition assessment looked like. Now, we're not expecting that we're going to get all of this stuff done in the years exactly as it's written. You know, we're going to have to review the things they have on the list, you know, what's on the list first, what's on the list in the second year? And use this as a guide to move forward because that's a huge number, almost $7 million over the first five years. So when, when you look at that much, you know, do you, do, do we think about putting $7 million over the next five years into these buildings? Or do we say it's still going to be an old building when we're done? Do we need to look at a new building? Right? Do we, do we look at this at an opportunity? You know, do we spend that much money or do we look, look at a different way of doing things? So one of the things that we really need to do at Hillcrest is we need to look at the floors. So we had the floors cracking, the asbestos tiles. Just like a Gill, this is something that's going to need to be done, no matter what we do with the building. So a full abatement, you can see over on the right, a full abatement to do all of the floors would be about $600,000. And a partial abatement of abating all of the hallways, the all purpose room, the um, cafeteria, kitchen, all purpose room and, you know, all those main areas, main traffic areas. The abatement, the floor replacement, and then just carpeting the classrooms as we did some last year would be closer to 225,000 dollars. And just doing carpets and just having money set aside for, you know, emergencies as they arise, doing little areas, you know, would be closer to the $80,000 that I have there as an estimate. So even if we said, we don't want to do everything that is on the building condition assessment report, we want to look at a new building. We still need to do something about these floors. So this would be a request to the town of Montague to replace the floors. And my recommendation would be the bottom half of that that chart on the right. And you can see the green outlined areas are the areas that we would be replacing, the asbestos floors. So we would not do the classrooms, removal of asbestos. We would just do, we would carpet over those to encapsulate. So an MSBA project, so if we said, let's look at building a new elementary school, adding on to Sheffield, the newer side of Sheffield, and just creating one Montague Elementary School. I just have a little information here. So I have a couple of links and I can send those to you. You know, so they're clickable links. Um, so the process is, is included in that first link. MSBA has a facility planning document to help you through the process. The first step is to submit, the first step with MSBA is to submit a statement of interest, just like we have done for the past several years for the Gill submit, the first step with MSBA is to submit a statement of interest, just like we have done for the past several years for the Gill Roof. The statement of interest would be, it's much larger for a full building project, much more in-depth, but it basically starts the same way. We would also need to do an ethical, education, educational planning program. And so I've included a sample of one that was prepared by the Orange Educational Program Planning group for when, before they built the Dexter Park Building Project. And I'm gonna get a couple other, a couple other samples that we can use that would be more like ours. So for our school, our schools in Montague, we have the Hillcrest School with the pre-K through one and then Sheffield which is two through five. And so you know, maybe you build one school that encompasses all of those grades adding on to the Sheffield School. The auditorium and gym would have to be repurposed because we have MSBA funding out on that section of the building. And so we, it's not a building that we can close because of that MSBA funding. So the cost estimate for such a project for MSBA, an elementary building could cost anywhere in the range from $40 million to $60 million. So I plugged 55,000, 55 million for our cost estimate here. Our reimbursement rate when we did our windows at Sheffield was 76%. So I use that as a rate. Now, the rate could be as high as 80% and then they do have incentive points that could bring you even just above 80%, which would reduce Montague's share. But Montague's share of this project would be $13 million using these numbers. So the annual cost would be closer to $800,000 a year for up to 20 years. Remember when we looked at the capital project list from the building assessment report, the cost would have been about an average of, you know, nearly 1.4 million a year for the next five years. So it's just some numbers to look at when we're talking about, is this somewhere we want to go? Stop the share there. So there you have it. Two asks from the towns would be the $10,000 for the computer for the Town of Gill, for the Gill Elementary, and then the floor repair for the Town of Montague. Even if we don't want to do a new building project, it might be best to only replace the hallway floors, the all-purpose room, the kitchen cafeteria for now, because if you're trying to replace the entire building, do the entire building, you need to empty the entire building. Right? And so that's, that's a huge process to empty the entire building. And where do you put it? That's a lot of stuff. But if you're going to only do hallways and the all-purpose room, you seal off the rooms with everything in them and then you can do that process. And if we decide not to do a building project and we want to do the floors in the classrooms after the fact, then take everything out of the classrooms, you move it into the all-purpose room, the cafeteria, and you can do those rooms without so much issue, right? So it makes it a little bit easier to do. So my proposal is that we ask for the hallways, the all-purpose room, cafeteria area, that partial abatement to be done and not a full abatement. And then continue the conversation of a potential building project with the Town of Montague. And the Capital Committee has already brought this subject up when they saw those reports. And so this isn't new information for the Capital Committee. So I put a message out to Steve Ellis about it and he thought we might have this conversation with the Select Board and they could invite the Finance Committee and the Capital Committee to that meeting since the Capital Committee has already sort of touched on it. So does anybody have any questions, comments? Suggestions?
It's a lot of information. Thank you. And I think, as you've said, therefore, we're not really voting tonight even on the ones that we want to request right, right now. We'll wait until next time for that.
Right, right. So next time I will bring you just the projects that I'm asking you to vote on and I'll have the vote language there for you and then we'll send those off to the towns if you vote them.
Okay. Anyone have any questions at the moment for Joanne? I'm sure we can ask them next time or even in between. Somebody thinks of something that they forgot to mention, they certainly could send it on to you, I would expect, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to school committee reports. We have some warrants to approve. The first one is an AP warrant, which is accounts payable. It's number 3212 dated 11/24/2021 in the amount of $217,309.88. The second is the middle school student activity account, accounts payable, which is number 3214 dated 11/24/21 as well, in the amount of $4,695.38. I would ask if we could approve those two together, if someone would make the motion, please?
So moved.
Heather, thank you. And Mike? Any questions about that? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote to approve it. Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the next one is a warrant that I separated for a particular reason. It makes it harder since we're not all in the same room to, to pass this over to Cassie to, to do. So I will read it and then she will voice it as having been what she said. The next one is a, it's also an accounts payable. It's number 3213, 11/24/21 for the date. The amount is $1,268.14. It's to reimburse the school committee members for attendance at the MAS, MAS S Conference in November. The school committee pays for their own lodging and drives there and then gets reimbursed for those things. So if Cassie would like to suggest that as a vote?
So I'll entertain a motion to approve warrant 3213 in the amount of $1,268.14.
So moved.
Mike? Mike moved. Heather seconded.
Seconded before he moved, sorry.
And I'll do a roll call vote. Heather?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jane?
I'll abstain.
And myself, yes. So that is approved.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the business portion, the first item is discussion of remote in-person school committee meetings. I don't think you've gotten any new information on that. I think we're still, especially now that we're looking at, at some increases. I don't see the mask mandate coming off anytime soon for people in the buildings. So we will continue to see what we can do. We'll continue to offer that anyone can be in our Zoom audience if they'd like to. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Okay, thank you. Second item, discussion of addressing pandemic learning loss. Brian?
So three, three pieces of information, one related to the elementary school. At each elementary school, reading teachers, along with the support of a consultant, have been leading data meetings with teachers to review literacy assessment data. From these meetings, intervention groups for reading have been implemented within the classroom, within the classrooms, as well as the continuation of students significantly below grade level receiving reading intervention with the school's reading teachers. So that process is being used to identify the most needful students and get them additional support. In the classroom, the in-classroom interventions are four to five weeks long and student growth will be measured at the end of that time to determine the growth and any additional intervention needs. At the secondary level, we've made a little bit of a shift in our professional development. Christopher Jean Powers and our consultant, Pat Bell, have been working together with some members of the faculty. So that on December 8th, the professional development for that day will focus on developing and implementing universal supports for all students. These supports specifically will be targeted at student social emotional wellbeing and their readiness for learning, helping them, helping to support their coping strategies and their ability to persevere and sustain work focus. And then I did want to add, a suggestion was made to consider potentially an assistant principal position for Sheffield Elementary. Given the challenges that all children are facing with social emotional needs, this is this position, the principal's position has required a significant amount of time that Melissa has had to take to directly intervene in, you know, the increased number of aberrant behaviors that started off the school year. I do want to give she and her faculty credit for their collaboration in, we have seen stabilization and somewhat subsiding of of those behaviors, I think primarily because students have become more acquainted with, with the routines again at school. However, we did want to continue the discussion at the administrative level and then be bringing that back to school committee. However, Melissa wanted to take the time to engage her faculty in an upcoming staff meeting and ask them to work with her on an assessment of what would be the best way to meet the behavioral management needs and the social emotional learning needs at Sheffield, given that we no longer have a part-time assistant principal at the school. And then after she has an opportunity to consult with her faculty and staff, she'll bring that information back to the administrative team and I'll bring that discussion back to school committee.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. The next item under business is scheduling school committee meetings with students. Were we able to come up with any ideas about what might work best for the students?
Well, this student, you could hear from Tina, the student council was, had a number of things on their agenda for this last Monday. And so they weren't able to get a discussion of meeting with school committee on the agenda for the entire council. But I followed up with Beth Fortin, their advisor, the day of their meeting, after the meeting, where she let me know they weren't able to get it in on the agenda. However, Beth shared with me that it was typically the executive board that met with members of school committee and it was usually arranged for lunch. So I'd like, if the committee is amenable, I would like to go back to go back to Beth and ask that she consult with the E-Board to see if we can set up one of those lunch meetings and do it remotely to start, so that, you know, we don't have, we're not bringing members of the school committee in the building and having the maskless and eating with kids. But, and then the E-Board can directly consult with the school committee about what other potential times might work for them or whether or not they just want to stick with lunch. So we'll see if we can get them to set up a lunch meeting sometime in December. And Christopher, Tina and I can work on, you know, setting up the Zoom link so that students are able to, you know, one of the members of the school committee can have the link passed on to them so that, you know, an administrator or teacher doesn't have to be there and you can work directly with the kids.
Thank you. I think that'll be a good start. We can see how that works out and see what they would like the best.
Okay, thank you.
Um, next item was discussion about capital improvements and building assessments. We actually covered that under Joanne's report unless anyone has thought of any additional questions that, it's a lot of information to take in, but we'll come back to it. And also discussion about fiscal year 23 budget. I think, Joanne, you pretty well covered everything that you wanted to in your report about that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is updates from the Six-Town Regional Planning Board. I know Cassie and Bill are our representatives, Cassie from Montague and Bill from Gill, and Bill was not able to join us this evening. So perhaps we will, we'll also add this to the next agenda because we've kept it on for every meeting. But in the meantime, we have been having the focus groups in our district yesterday, yesterday. Sometimes these days all run together. Cassie?
I just want to say the Montague Reporter has done an excellent job of really keeping this sort of on the tip of our tongue and, and mentioning it when they're covering all of our meetings and making sure that, you know, the readers in Montague and, and surrounding towns that subscribe are aware that these meetings are happening. So I just want to kind of shout out that because I know that, you know, in other areas, communication, and, and we are not perfect on communication by any means, but I feel like this is something I keep hearing that, you know, people might not be aware that these meetings are happening, but I do know that the Montague Reporter is really putting out there when they are and how to be involved. So I just want to put that out there. You know, if anyone's listening and is curious, that's where they can find the information if they're not attending our meetings.
Thank you. Yes, there was a nice, it was a schedule of all the different meetings and it even had the link for the survey. And I guess I would like to take this opportunity to encourage anyone who, whether they went to the forums or not, or whether they intend to certainly take this occasion to fill out the survey. I think it's really important, the more families of students, the more community members we can hear from. Those are the people that our schools serve and that would help us a great deal to have their perspective. So, and I'm hoping everyone will encourage anyone else they talk to, to go ahead and fill out the survey as well. Cassie?
Well, and I just want to add, you know, Mike and I are the representatives from the school committee on that board, but people should feel open to express their opinions or ideas to, to, to us, Mike and I, but also to any other, you know, committee members that they feel comfortable with. Because it is important that if people have strong feelings about this, they're sharing them, or if people have questions, they're asking them. It, it really has to be an open dialogue because it is important.
Yes, yes.
So if they can't, yeah, if they can't attend a forum or if they don't fill out a survey, they're, they're always more than welcome to just email concerns or questions or anything to us.
Thank you. Yes, good suggestion. And also I did have a community member had made a suggestion. I didn't see it until after the forum yesterday. I would have suggested it. This person was wondering if there would be a way to put the presentation, the slideshow on MCTV or something for people who were not able to attend one. I thought that was a good suggestion. Heather?
Well, that's what I was just gonna say. Do we have somewhere where we can put the Google site up because they actually have it already up there? I mean, I can share what the address is now, but that's not super helpful, but.
I wonder if we couldn't even just add a link to the web, to our website?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know if Tina can answer that, but it may be just, you know, a link there to find it.
That way it has the, oh, sorry, Mike. That way it has the, all the information, the schedule, the recorded things, the survey. So it's, and it's pretty concise.
Just send the information to me. And I can do, I can set that up.
I'll do it now.
Sorry, Tina, one more thing on your list.
But I still, Mike, I, I know you sometimes have connections with GCTV, MCTV, I'm sorry, wrong group. But, and I think, because sometimes I think, you know, when a community member mentions something like that, they might not be somebody who would necessarily access our website. There's a way to see those slides as a presentation. There's a way to see those slides as a presentation on the cable television that would give another opportunity for more people to access it.
Sure. I'll talk to Dean about it.
That would be great. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. It's very helpful when community members ask questions or make suggestions. It really does help.
Sure, definitely.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And we will keep coming back to this because I think.
We lost you. Still gone.
Am I back now?
Yeah. Jane, I wonder when that happens, if you turned off your video quickly, if that might help?
I've tried that. I believe Tina is going to try me on a better Chromebook.
Okay, just a thought, like.
Maybe if it's the, the Chromebook itself that is having a little glitch going on here. But the date on the survey is December third. They would, the board would like to have responses back for the survey by December third. So we might remind people of that. That might be helpful, too. Thank you. Next item is to review and approve our school committee goals. We did have a working session last week, and we pretty much felt that we had completed them. And I looked over them again today, and I thought, that's pretty good work. Give us a little kudo there. Anyone have any thoughts about whether they want to do a bit more editing or anything else after the fact? Cassie?
I'm just really impressed by how we all really were able to collaborate together to come up with some really great material for these goals, and it was very thoughtful, and it was very helpful, and you know, we don't always have the same opinion, but we're able to listen and sort of work our way around it and figure out what needs to be done. And I would move to approve these because I feel like we spent two sessions really putting in the tough work. And, and I think, I mean, I don't want to pat myself on the back, but like, kudos to all of you, because we, we got the job done, I think.
Well, and I think coming up with a written document with a committee is a real challenge. I mean, I've done it on a lot of occasions, and the usual recommendation is that you give your ideas to the committee, and then one person does the writing so that it flows. But I must say, I think we really accomplished it. I agree with you.
And in the remote world, like, we didn't know a month and a half ago how we were going to make this work. I mean, you and I had conversations about, like, how do we do this? We can't be in the same room together. So I just, I think it's really commendable, and I think you shall be very proud of yourself for getting it done.
Thanks. Okay, I believe Cassie moved it, right? Second, Heather? Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. The next item was to be a report on the MAS, MAS joint conference. Jennifer, Brian, and I attended in person, and Cassie attended virtually, which isn't easy, but they made it possible because sometimes people can't get away. I mean, families, jobs, you know, those things make it hard. There's so much information, though. The more we talked about it, I think we're going to try to see if those of us that had attended one way or the other, will get together a document and perhaps do a presentation at a later time. There was a lot of information. There were a lot of good presentations. And I think that might be perhaps the best way to do it, if that makes sense. Mike?
Actually, and that does certainly make sense to me. I'm just going to back up real quick, long enough to say that if you go to Montague Community Television, the Vimeo video is already up. So if somebody wanted to watch last night's session, it's on MCTV.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Done and done. Wow. Check that off. Great, and thanks for checking, Mike. Okay, so we will bring back the report on the sessions that we attended, the specific workshops, the general sessions, and also the resolutions. Jennifer was our delegate for those. It was, it was a most impressive conference. It, it never fails to impress, especially some of the student speakers, the high school student speakers at the general sessions were just amazing. And, and the teacher, the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year, a lot of great, great speakers. So we'll bring up a more comprehensive report on that. The next item is, um, unfortunately, another one of our members is not able to be a part of the school committee anymore at this point. Joanna Booty did resign her seat. The Montague seat is unable to continue at this point. So we'll be looking for a member to fill that seat. I will get in touch with both Julian at the Greenfield Recorder and Mike at the Montague Reporter, and ask if they will put something in their papers as stating that we're looking for somebody to send a letter of interest to the superintendent's office to fill that position. Cassie?
Just shout out to Joanna, like, this isn't easy work ever, and however long we can get somebody to do the work, you know, it, it doesn't matter whether it's five years or two months or whatnot. Like, I just thank you, Joanna, and.
Yes.
Wish her well.
I, right, I thought it would be a good opportunity, actually, to thank everybody. I think it's, the job hasn't gotten any easier. People have families, they have jobs, they have other commitments, but, and it's a huge amount of work that behind the scenes to get ready for the meetings on everybody's part. And I think it, I do appreciate, again, what you've said, anybody, whatever time they can spend with us is, is valuable, and we appreciate it, certainly. Okay, so we will be sending that information out. I believe the letter of interest, if we date it as of the thirteenth of December, that will give people a good, long time to submit a letter of interest, and then we have a meeting the following evening on December fourteenth. And other than that, we don't have minutes to approve at this moment. Agenda requests, please make them at any time to Cassie, myself, or Brian. We generally meet the Tuesday before our next Tuesday meeting, to do that, to put that together. The next scheduled meetings, regular meetings, December seventh at six-thirty, December twenty-first at six-thirty. They'll be virtual again, and if there's an executive session, we'll schedule it ahead of time. Um, I think that's it for now. Anything else?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Did anyone move that? I'll second it.
I think Mike did. Right, Mike?
Second, something.
And Cassie seconded it, and yes, happy Thanksgiving. We'll have a roll call vote. Go off to see if we can organize Thanksgiving.
Ryan's already got his coat on. He's ready to go.
No, no, it got cold in here.
Layers to begin with, right? It's cold out.
Yeah. It got cold in here. I, that's why I had to shut my camera off and get up and go put my coat on.
All those in favor, Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Gobble, gobble.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good holiday.
You too. Good night.